I've heard it all.
Yeah. I doubt that for a second. We got everybody? Mike's going to be here, so we'll just let him make a late entrance. How's that? Good evening, everyone. I would call this special city council meeting of August 21st, 2018, to order. We have a number of people that have registered for the open forum, so just from a procedural standpoint, please come up to the dais, sign in with your name and address, tell us your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes, and I don't, I'm not a rigid ruler, so I'm not going to cut you at the three minute, but try to limit it, your comments, okay? The first gentleman is Chris Feint.
Good evening. Thank you. Like I said, my name is Chris Feint. I'm a Richfield firefighter and secretary of our union, local 1215. I'm here today to explain an event we have coming up next month. It's in September. What did I do? Good. All right. Next month, in September, the Edina-St. Louis Park and Richfield firefighters are putting on an event called Fire Ops 101. This event is an opportunity for city leaders to experience firsthand the environment that firefighters work in on a daily basis. The program that day will include actually putting on firefighters' protective gear, wearing a self-contained breathing apparatus, and going inside a live fire. Along with that scenario, there will be a search and rescue scenario, and a hands-on EMS scenario, and an opportunity to use our extrication equipment to cut apart a real vehicle. Obviously, these will be controlled scenarios, but will nevertheless be a great opportunity for city leaders to experience firefighting firsthand. Like I said, this event will take place next month. It's Sunday, September 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. to about 2:00 p.m. The scenarios themselves will be over about noon, then we'll have a lunch from noon to about 2:00. The event will be held at the Southwest Metro Public Safety Training Facility, which is by the Braemar Ice Arena over at Edina. So with the support of our chiefs, the Richfield firefighters would like to publicly invite all city council members and those in city management to participate on this exciting and informative event. So I'll email the details to Jared to forward on to all of you for you to look at and get back to us on.
Do me a favor.
Yes.
Tell Jared to remind us so that we can publish it every time we're up here.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds interesting and exciting.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Dave Huss.
Evening, sir. I'm Dave Huss. I've been a resident for about 24 years. I live at 7028 Oak Grove Boulevard. I'm here to express concerns I have about the current layout of Lindell Avenue project. My concerns lie specifically with the roundabout at 70th and Lindell, as well as the design of the corridor from 70th down to 74th. I've spoken here at the city council, I've attended open houses, transportation commission meetings, and have spent several hours speaking with Jack Bros, and many hours going over the plans and reading studies. Jack Bros, along with several members of the Transportation Commission and council member Simon Trautman, agreed to keep an open mind to alternative options for Lindell Avenue, the approved layout. The roundabout at 70th and Lindell has been a topic of discussion in my household, at meetings in our neighborhood, at a neighborhood meeting, mostly among longtime residents who are very familiar with the flow of traffic at this intersection. Me and my family and neighbors have firsthand experience living so close. We navigate that intersection regularly and watch other people do the same. I've read and discussed with Jack numerous studies that support the fact that roundabouts reduce traffic speed. My concern, as well as other people in the neighborhood, is that of pedestrian and biker safety when crossing Lindell Avenue at that intersection. According to the Bolton and Mink Traffic Study that the city commissioned, the current rate of incidents at that intersection is well below the state average and falls well within the normal range, which would normally indicate that no change is recommended. I'm not an engineer, but in the course of reading all these studies, I find that with little exception, they come to a conclusion that there are site conditions at some intersections which will warrant, that will create conditions that result in higher rates of incidents and a less effective flow of traffic. So of course, in these instances, the roundabout would not necessarily be a good fit. I think 70th and Lindell Avenue is one of those. And I'm guessing that all these studies read by me, anyone here, anyone with the city, could be cherry picked to support the use of roundabouts and very much to argue against them. But the point that I'd like to make is that of all the studies that concede that this is not always the best alternative to signalized intersections, and the fact that 70th does not fall outside the normal safe range, and that works and has been proven safe with the new method of traffic control like a roundabout that is untested on that particular intersection, the concern lies with those high-peak times. In a couple of weeks, we'll have the benefit of seeing school start, so we can actually go out there and look what a morning peak traffic situation is like, and at the end of the day as well. So we haven't had that opportunity yet, but I'd like to see us seize that opportunity so that we can truly find out if all these concerns are warranted.
About time to wrap it up, Mr. Huss.
Okay. I'll go right to the conclusion, then, unfortunately, here. What I'm hoping today is that during the process of refining the Lindell Avenue plan, all the parties can stay open-minded about the roundabout and the possible ideas of keeping what we've got in the interest of pedestrian safety. The needs of the bikers and drivers and walkers are important, but the impact on those who live on Lindell Avenue has to be given great consideration. Please be respectful of the fact that everything having to do with this project will have a profound effect on the people and will change the unique nature of this part of Richfield forever.
Thank you. I appreciate if you really hold your applause, please. We've got a lot of people we want to listen to. Laurel Vasiliadis, hopefully I didn't butcher that too bad. Am I close?
Vasiliadis.
Vasiliadis, thank you.
Dear Mayor Pat Elliott and city council members, I am Laurel Vasiliadis. My husband Costas and I are the homeowners and residents at 7020 Lindell Avenue South in Richfield. We, along with our neighbors, are being profoundly impacted by the proposed Lindell Avenue reconstruction project. Some of these impacts include significant loss, excuse me, of space to and value of our properties, privacy issues due to the bike-walking paths close in proximity, loss of many old healthy oaks, overall liability during construction, noise, dust, potential damages due to jackhammering, limiting access to our home, public transportation options during construction as one of us commutes daily, traffic and pedestrian safety issues due to roundabouts and median. Costas and I like the insight of reduced traffic flow and improved safety, but are distressed over the negative impact and safety issues to us and our neighbors' everyday existence, our sense of safety and our conveniences, as well as our sense of home. The city is seemingly accommodating pastor byers and commuters while disregarding the red incidents who live here and actively utilize the walks and roads on a regular basis to experience and know what are and are not issues. The proposed bike-walking path will be encroaching upon our properties and privacy with the loss of significant space between it and our front door. It is excessive, given there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street and won't even connect with integral and desirable paths of leisure. We propose a path to be modified to a less imposing, much more practical sidewalk with the added benefit of saving more trees. The project is eliminating half of our private parking, and this will require us and our guests to park and cross Lindell much more frequently. This combined with the proposed roundabout at 70th threatens our very safety and access to our property on a daily basis. Currently, the lighted intersection at 70th tunes traffic and gives way to enter/exit or cross Lindell as opposed to the continuous flow of a roundabout. It will create more traffic, not less, due to the reduction of four lanes to two, generating more cars in a row and less accessibility, especially during high-traffic periods. Our driveway lies first at the inlet and outlet of the proposed roundabout and median, dictating one-way access to and from our property with the added stress of cars impatiently pressing behind us and knowing to pass by as we pull into our drive. There is quite frankly no need for a roundabout when it's not a major four-way intersection, but a three-way community inlet and outlet for the residents in the area, the school and the church. Our very concerns are backed with recent knowledge that residents at Nicolet and Portland roundabouts are having these very implications and are being told by the city, we did not foresee this being a problem. But now that the city is indeed aware of the detriment and has the foresight to make changes, we employ your crucial reconsideration of the roundabout and to keep 70 as the lighted intersection. Thanks so much for your time. You have given us today to give voice to our insights and concerns and requests.
Thank you. Peter Odegaard.
My name is Pete Odegaard. I live at 7040 Oak Grove Boulevard, and my two concern today is the roundabout at 70th and Lindell. Again, pedestrian safety. I'm the father of five children. My son will bike to the Richfield pool, and we have had to design different ways for him to get to the pool because of the roundabout at Portland. And one who goes through that intersection on a regular basis, it's very difficult to anticipate a pedestrian trying to cross that if you're coming in or out of the intersection. And as others have already mentioned, the brake, the light, is a safety concern for me to be able to get in and out of our neighborhood and watching the number of people that come in and go to the school, going and watching all the students that come and park along 70th Street on the way to school during the day. And as the father of those that are young drivers, also access in and out of the neighborhood when the constant stream of cars versus having a break of the light where you can actually enter and exit the neighborhood is my foremost concern. I also, my in-laws in Wisconsin have witnessed this, have had similar concerns with pedestrian safety at roundabouts in some of their communities in DePere around Green Bay, that that has been a concern there as well, of pedestrians not accessing intersections, being able to get to their parts in the neighborhood. So I thank you for your time, and I just would ask you to consider thoughtfully looking at the design of that intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Anderson.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. I really appreciate it. Quick word first. Mr. City Manager, Steve, I want to salute you for your many years of exemplary service to Richfield. We came 50 years ago and have closely observed the kind of leadership you've provided through times of transition and change, and both of us know those are exciting, but it's hard to lead because everybody's an expert like I'm going to be tonight, Mr. Mayor. So we understand, and I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now, last question is, how did you get by with dark hair and mine turned white? I need to talk to you about that, but we'll talk later. As a schoolteacher, I'm going to use a simile, hopefully to help you remember what I say. This is an airplane, a C-130, that I jumped out of in Fort Benning, Georgia, so it's kind of close to my heart. But the point I want to make tonight, hopefully to help you remember, there are two wings on this plane. It doesn't fly with one wing. It takes two. There's not a good wing and a bad wing. There's not a right wing and a wrong wing. They both serve wonderful purposes. And what I want to share tonight about the plane is there are two wings on this plane that are being brought before you. One, the data analysis wing. I'm a superintendent of schools, as you may or may not know, for 27 years. Loved it, appreciated it, and I needed to rely on data for student achievement, enrollment forecast, financial forecast, so I'm a big supporter of data, the one wing of the plane. The second wing was taught to me by my mom and dad and my brother. They said, "The real business of life is people. You need data, but it's people that we're about." So what I want to say to you from my heart is three things about the second wing, and that is the people wing or the human wing. Three points about the people wing. Number one, I know you are hearing, and I respect it, I mean no disrespect for any staff member, I know you're hearing that it's safe to cross a cul-de-sac at 70th and Lindell. I've watched my kids, grandkids, neighbors' kids cross that intersection before there was a light, after there was a light, and our heart was in our mouth the whole time. What's going to happen when these young kids, when parents pushing strollers are trying to get across the cul-de-sac? Two or three weeks ago, Carol and I came home from Hope Church, where we attend, stopped at that intersection, and a person in a scooter was trying to get across. And he was having trouble because the traffic was turning right on Lindell, right on to 70th, and both of us exclaimed at the same time, "He never would get across with a roundabout." So from my heart, I suggest you rethink the safety idea. We're talking about people, boys and girls, and men and women. Secondly, the second part of the wing is the environment. If I have the correct information, from 70th to 74th, the city is going in 17 feet onto the property of Richfield citizens, cutting down trees, foliage, plants, and in some of those houses that are fairly close, that's having an amazing difference on the environment for those people. Again, if that, if those data, Steve, aren't up to date, I stand corrected, but that's what a staff member told us. The third point of the human side, people are affected financially when they're a quarter to a third to half, I've got 30 seconds left, Mr. Mayor, I'm watching you. Taken out of your yard, it has a financial effect. We've been told up to 40% value may be affected. So why am I here? I'm pleading for you folks and the excellent staff you have to partner with us. We're not your enemies, we're your friends. We want to work together. We want to fly this plane together to make, to continue to have Richfield be a great place and have the citizens be heard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Larry Koch.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. I've spoken here before about the Lindell reconstruction. I do ask that, as the other presenters have said, that you keep an open mind and an open ear, and I know that George Street policy says that you'll do that all the way through to the finish. First of all, I want to thank the city council. I want to thank Mr. Bros, and I apologize, I don't remember Jeff's name, for taking the time to come out to my client, Nola Wagner's place, and help walk through where the improvements would go. And it was very appreciative and very informative. The issue still is this, my client's driveway is within 150 feet of the roundabout, and we believe that it will be extremely difficult for my client to enter into Lindell. Now, with the three lanes going from Lindell to her property, may or may not be easier. But the problem is, is access. Also, she's concerned about the safety of the people crossing the streets, and despite what some information is, roundabouts are not necessarily safer on that basis, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Bros. But the big issue for my client is, basically, there's not enough room to put the roundabout where it's going to be that will give my client sufficient opportunity to enter Lindell and utilize Lindell as she has in the past. And so what we're asking is that you retain the traffic light at Lindell and 70th, number one, for that reason, so that she can have access to Lindell. Secondly, there is no basis to put a roundabout at Lindell and 70th based on safety. Mr. Bros has told me personally, as one of the other presenters said, the study by the engineers clearly states, there is not a safety issue at Lindell and 70th. There is no reason to put a roundabout at Lindell and 70th if it is going to impede my client's ability to access Lindell as she has in the past. Now, there, obviously, Mr. Bros doesn't think that it's going to impact her access, but thinking isn't actuality. I have asked, at minimum, the engineers be involved to do calculations to determine the traffic pattern that will be changed when we go from four lanes down to effectively two lanes of traffic. Simple math says it's going to double. It would seem to me at a very minimum, before going forward with a roundabout, that the engineers do the calculations. I'm sure they have the modeling, they're able to do that, I'm somewhat familiar with the engineering firm, I'm sure they have the sophistication. But as it is now, there is no evidence that she will be able to access Lindell the manner in which she has. And a light, and a smart light, is the way to go. And I just want to add, it wasn't pointed out, but the number of letters, over 40 letters were presented to you on this issue of the roundabout, and I ask you to listen sincerely to those individual citizens living along Lindell and their needs. Again, just to summarize, there is no safety issue at that intersection, there is no reason to put in a roundabout. There is a reason, and a very good reason, not to do it, to put in a light instead, a smart light, so that my client can have access to Lindell as she has. I want to thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Go ahead, let it loose. Go ahead and plot. No, I'm serious. No, I just want to say that, and I can only speak for myself, we're a city council and we pretty much act together, but we all are free thinkers and use our own intellect and our own eyes and our own senses to try to determine what's the right answer. What I can say about this is, no options are closed. No one has closed their mind to what you're telling us, and staff is working, based on the emails I see, working quite hard trying to explore all the opportunities and all the options. We haven't been presented with anything yet, we haven't been asked to vote on anything. So all I can tell you is, is you're not, you're not speaking to people that aren't paying attention, you're not speaking to people that won't weigh all the alternatives and try to make the best decision for the city. So that's my promise, is the best decision. What that's going to be, I can't tell you because I haven't seen the presentations. So with that being said, I don't know if anybody else would like to speak, but if not, I would ask you then to join and do the pledge of allegiance with us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I have to add one more thing. I said that I don't speak for all of us, and then I just did that. So if there is anything any council member would like to add or would like to say to the citizens that spoke to us this evening, feel free. Well, with that being said, that at this time, I would move the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of July 16th, 2018, the special concurrent city council and housing redevelopment authority work session of July 16th, 2018, the special city council work session of July 16th, 2018, special city council work session of July 24th, 2018, special city council work session of July 24th, 2018, and the regular city council meeting of July 24th, 2018, and last but not least, special city council meeting of August 2nd, 2018. So moved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. At this time, my normal fallback is have Councilmember Garcia speak to hometown hits, but she abandoned me this evening, so Councilmember Reagan comes house. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, I have two items, and they both are related to our Richfield High School. There's a couple of things coming up. So we are looking for youth commission members to join our city commissions. We have several different commissions. We are looking for youth to apply and join us. You must be at least 15 years of age and currently enrolled in a high school or an equivalent, if you're homeschooled, and you have the same rights and responsibilities as the rest of the commissioners. But it's a great opportunity for youth to be involved in the city, to get to know how the city works, have decision-making power and influence, and really shaping the future of Richfield. And every time that I meet a new youth on the commission, they are just extremely intelligent, bright, passionate students, and it's such an honor to work with them. So you can go onto the city website and apply if you're a youth that is interested in joining one of our commissions, and we ask that the application be submitted to the city by August 28th. And the second thing going on with the high school is, the 11th graders in our high school were selected to attend a Broadway showing of Hamilton, and right now, there is a GoFundMe page to help support them in lowering the cost of the tickets. So if you go to GoFundMe.com and you search RHS Hamilton Field Trip, you will find where you can go to help donate and send our 11th graders to Hamilton.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
I just had two items. First, wanted to just highlight all the, it's been a while since we've been together to highlight Night to Unite and the work of all the council members and our police to get out about across the whole community. It was a great night, good weather. The folks that I had a chance to connect with all. The folks that I had a chance to connect with all enjoyed the opportunity to, I kind of joked with, when they see a council member roll up, I think everyone's expecting a police officer, but, you know, we'll get him next year.
Disappointed that it's us.
And then, the only, the only word of caution, you know, we handed out the wonderful light-up balls from the Richfield Police. I heard that somebody squeezed one of those balls in the car when the sun was coming down, and it kind of looks like a police light going off in the car. So watch out for that. But, no, folks had a really great time, and I think we had a record number of parties, almost 200 throughout the city, and it's great to just see those numbers keep going up each year. And then my second item was around affordable housing, something that we've obviously been spending a lot of time talking about. Just today, the governor's task force on housing released their final report, which is the product of a lot of work over the course of a year. And reading through the report, which has really struck me so much, discussed in that report are issues that Richfield, that we are looking at and things we've actually moved forward, and Richfield has even called out for some of our work in terms of reducing fees for developers that are going to come in and potentially do some more kind of affordable housing. There's other items in the report around tenant protections that we've been discussing, and also some of the broader issues that are important to a city like Richfield on the resources side, where, you know, a city our size just doesn't quite have the resources, but discussing at each level of government some of sort of the policy solutions to bear. And so I would just, if folks are interested in that issue, you can go to, hold on, I just had the website called up, MNHousingTaskForce.com, and you can read the report or see sort of the policies that are discussed. And it just was very relevant to our work here in Richfield, and so I wanted to call it out.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody remembers, a couple of weeks ago, I had mentioned that there's a resident, a longtime resident of the city of Richfield, that is one of those proverbial, really, really bright lights that kind of hides it. He doesn't brag, he doesn't talk about honors he's received or anything like that. I couldn't divulge his name because I hadn't asked for him to let me speak about him. I actually happened to run into him at a party on Night to Unite, and it was on Mayor Gutell's block, he's one of Mayor Gutell's neighbors. His name is Mark Jenkins. Mark has lived in Richfield for 35, 40 years, had three kids that went through the high school. His son graduated from Richfield with mine and now teaches in the school. So they are long-time residents of Richfield who love it here. He's got two daughters, one of who's married and owns a house here, so it's not unlike my family where we got 55 family members. But the thing about Mark is, he was recently named a Regents Professor at the University of Minnesota. There are a total of 30 of them, and they're nominated by the peers, and it is an honor that is not only esteemed, but for most of us unattainable. He wouldn't publish it, he would never put it out there, he would never talk about himself or what he does. He served six years on the school board, has devoted a lot of time to Richfield. The only referendum that the school ever lost, he organized neighbors and did a, I think, three drops through the entire city, telling them, "We can't afford to lose another referendum." So his passion is with Richfield, it's always quiet, it's always understated. And I can tell you that we're best friends, we share a lot, and I'm in awe of him. And I think, just a little anecdote on why I'm in awe of him, and you always, every once in a while, you see a sitcom that talks about, you know, going in and talking to the class and telling them about your education and what you do and all that. You always get maybe a little puffed up, and you're going to throw a lot of accolade your direction and try to excite the kids with what you do. I had the misfortune of having to follow Dr. Jenkins. And when he started going through the educational process, and by the time he had 23 years of education, I knew I was toast. So you just say, you know, "Congratulations to Dr. Jenkins, I'm Pat, I'm a lawyer, big deal, I'll see you tomorrow." But the thing about it is, it's, maybe it's what Richfield is made of. You've got neighbors left, right across the street. What they do, how they make their money, how much money they make, is never a subject of conversation, it's never important. It's about, "You're my neighbor, how you doing today?" Talk about the kids, talk about the neighbors, and they're just like Councilmember Howard, Councilmember Garcia, of all of us. We're neighbors, but we're not about talking about ourselves. And he's the epitome, he's what shapes Richfield, he's what makes us so strong, and he's what makes it so wonderful to be a resident. So congratulations to Dr. Jenkins.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Garcia.
Mayor, that was beautiful, thank you. I just have a few items. September the 4th is the first day of school, so that means we have to be reminded that there's going to be kids all around and school buses, so we've got to be careful. Second, tomorrow, the Richfield Historical Society will continue its series on the history of Richfield, and this will be at 10:00 a.m. at the Richfield Community Center. I want to also mention National Night Out. I think people know me too well, you know, because when I walk up, you know, they have all these adjectives they use on me, and they really, you know, they kid with me, and so I really appreciate their sense of humor. And not only that, but I, you know, just the energy and the camaraderie around National Night Out. I wish we had more than one night out a year, really, it's very beneficial. And the other thing, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we've got former council member Sue Sandahl and former council member Mike Sandahl in the audience, and, you know, they put in a lot of time and effort and dedication into making, you know, being part of Richfield history. And they will always be really known for their love of their community and their loyalty to their community. So thank you.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. So it is hard to believe it's already close to the end of summer here, and it is back to schooltime, so I have a couple of fall and September announcements. One announcement is Penfest. For those of you that haven't ever been a part of Penfest, that's the Open Streets on Penn Avenue. It's an amazing event, and it's grown from being several thousand people to last year, estimates, police estimates, were upwards of 10,000 people on Penn Avenue from one side of Richfield to the other. It's a great event. We have the BMX bikes, they do trick, but they're up at least a dozen feet in the air flipping. I don't know how they do that, that's my kids, that's their favorite event, but they have inflatables, bounce houses, we have a number of food trucks that are coming this year. And with that in mind, we have, we have space for one, maybe two more food trucks. If you're a food vendor or you know somebody with a food truck, there's still an opportunity by this Friday. By this Friday is the opportunity. Also, if you have, you or a friend or a family member of yours has a small business, whether it's artisans or crafts or something like that, there are still spaces for vendors to come and be a part of the event. But it's a great event, it's September 16, noon to 5 o'clock, come, enjoy it, it's always amazing. We also have a 5K run that's going to be a part of that. In years past, we've stopped that for a couple of years, we're restarting the 5K. Also, with Woodlake Nature Center, they announced their membership drive, so you'll permit me an NPR-like detour here for the membership drive for the Friends of Woodlake Nature Center. It's free for the community, it's a treasure of Richfield to have that nature center. It's $30 a year for an individual, $50 for a family. If I can, if I can channel Gary Eikden for just a second, if you use it, would you put a value on that? And if you get, if you get $5 a month worth of value out of, a heck of a deal. It's a heck of a deal to be a member. You also, if you have kids, there's programming throughout the year, a lot of that programming is free if you're a member, so it pays for itself that way. A couple of upcoming events, the Sunday specials, that's Sundays, Sunday in the after, if you have, if you have kids or you're a kid at heart, the first week in September, or September 9th, they're going to do honey harvesting. So you can go with your kids, and we have honeybees at Woodlake, and you can see them and you can taste the honey. You can taste that raw honey while it's being harvested, it's a great event, but every Sunday they do that, and the last event, Tuesday mornings, that's coming back in the fall too, Tuesday mornings, if you have preschoolers, it's a great event that you can be a part of. Every week they do something new, but you can get together with other dads and moms that are stay-at-home parents and give a great opportunity for your kids. So, membership drive, Penfest, lots happening this fall in Richfield.
All worthy, and congratulations, you've been hired as a Barker at the grandstand.[1233.15][1233.15](laughter) They were all wonderful, wonderful presentations, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. City manager, did I miss something?
Agenda.
Need the approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Next item is item number three, city manager.
The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved and require no further council action. I do want to clarify something. I was led to understand that item D was to be pulled off the consent calendar, and if that's the case, you probably should go back and modify the agenda to take that off.
I agree. At this time, I would move the approval of the agenda with the understanding that item D on the consent calendar has been removed pursuant to a request of Councilmember Troutman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so amended, the agenda is approved.
All right, that being said, the consent calendar, again, this evening starts with item A, consideration of the approval of Minnesota Department of Transportation lease agreement, number 27710, with amendment number five, for continued use of excess land along I-494 next to the Best Buy campus for a metro transit park and ride parking lot and transit station. Item B is consideration of approval of the bid tabulation and award of contract to Visi Sewer Incorporated for the 2018 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of $368,904.20, and to authorize the city manager to approve contract changes under $100,000 without further council consideration. Item C is consideration of the approval of the transfer of funds to close out the 76th Street West Capital Project Fund. Item D, as we talked about, has been removed. Item E is consideration of the approval of a parking agreement with Crowe's Anderson Construction Company for non-exclusive use of the parking lot at Taft Park to park the personal vehicles of construction workers associated with the Chamberlain Housing Development. Item F is consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing a three-year interim use permit to allow temporary inventory storage of vehicles on a designated parking lot of the Church of St. Richard located at 7540 Penn Avenue. And finally, item G, consideration of the approval of subordination agreements consenting to environmental covenants on Outlet B, Lyndale Garden Center redevelopment site, that would be the Shoreline property. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Councilmember Troutman, would you like to speak to item D on the consent calendar that's been removed?
Thank you, Mayor. While reviewing the consent calendar, I noticed, item D, I want to make sure I get the name right, it's the Wheel Fund Rentals lease renewal, and they manage the multi-shop and the mini golf course. And I noticed, when I was reviewing this afternoon, that the renewal was for 15 years, and because it was part of the consent calendar, and I just had some questions, that's a long period of time, and just wanted an opportunity to table that so we could learn a little bit more about it when we voted.
Procedurally, would you have a request, or would you like to meet with the applicants, or what's, what would you like procedurally to see happen?
Procedure, I guess, a couple of questions and concerns I have. I was there, some of my first dates in high school were at the golf course there. I don't think it's been updated since that time. I know there's a, they're expanding, they're going to use more of that space, not less. And so I think, I just want to, I want to understand if we're giving up a large, to my mind is, you know, it's a bigger parcel of our Veterans Park for the next 15 years. I just, I just need more information before I could vote in good conscience.
Yes. And what will happen is, we'll certainly have staff meet with you. I can tell you just a couple of quick things. One, the mini golf course that was built back, I don't know how many years ago it was now, but it is deteriorating pretty badly. And the city's not really in a position to invest city funds back into it. And so, and so we leased it out to a private enterprise to work it, and they're looking at making improvements on their dime. And we can go through that with you, but it's, for us, it was, it was a losing money proposition. And right now, it actually net brings us profit, so by us not operating it. So, again, we can go into detail with you, and anyone, any other council member that wants information on that, I'd be happy to do it for you.
No, thank you for that, and I didn't want to ask any particular questions, because I didn't, I didn't want to put you on the, on the spot, city manager. I appreciate you sharing that, but I just had questions, and I thought rather than talk, I just, if we, thank you for accommodating me.
Okay, and I'll bring it back, the first meeting in September, if everyone's okay with the explanations, if anyone wants more.
Would the process perhaps move a little more smoothly if Councilmember Troutman addresses his questions in writing, and then you can circulate to all the council the answers?
Sure.
I'd be glad to.
Sure.
Okay, great, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of resolutions regarding the modification of the redevelopment plan for the Richfield redevelopment project area, the modification to the tax increment financing plan for the Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District, and the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number 2018-1. In March 2018, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority entered into a preliminary development agreement with NHH Companies LLC to develop a multifamily housing project in the Cedar Point II area, bounded by 63rd Street to the north, Richfield Parkway to the east, 65th Street to the south, and 16th Avenue to the west. The proposed development includes 218 market-rate apartments on Richfield Parkway and up to 84 sale townhomes along 16th Avenue. The financial feasibility analysis indicates a substantial gap in the project. Significant acquisition costs for the existing family, single-family homes on 16th Avenue, the high cost of structured parking, stormwater improvements, and construction material required to meet sound attenuation standards, and the desire to include affordable townhome units necessitate the need for public assistance to bridge the gap. The development currently sits with the Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District that was established in 2005 and extended into 2017. Under the proposed modification, the east half of the site and the proposed apartment development would remain in the existing district, and a new housing tax increment financing district would be established to cover the west half of the site and proposed affordable townhomes. So I'll pass it over to our staff. I thought the discussion that the HRA had last night was a really great discussion, so maybe if you can give us a summary and hit some of those points that you talked about last night?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, I would say that this is a step that we've been anticipating as a community since 2005, since this district was created, so it really shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. We knew that because of the extraordinary costs associated with noise attenuation and the, just the cost of developing a formerly developed site, that tax increment financing would be necessary. And so this is a statutorily required step through the Minnesota Legislature and the rules they have set up for tax increment financing. In the document itself, you'll see tax increment numbers in there. Really, those just meet some statutory requirements. The actual amount of tax increment financing that the developer would receive will be that the developer would receive will be, um, will be identified in the development agreements with the developer. Uh, the numbers in this are, are kind of the, um, telling us what amount of tax increment could be, uh, in the most liberal set of circumstances possible could be, uh, uh, could happen within a twenty-six-year period. So, as we've talked about, the Cedar, uh, TIF district, uh, was established in 2005. It was extended a little bit later. Um, it's still, um, years have ticked by and it does not have its full, uh, twenty-five-year period anymore. There are several different types of TIF districts. The Cedar Avenue TIF district right now is a redevelopment TIF district. Uh, since the developer is proposing the seventy-two to eighty-four sale townhomes that are affordable, that meets the requirements for a housing TIF district. In this case, it'd be more advantageous to the developer and the project, um, to take the parcels, uh, in that townhome area out of the existing redevelopment TIF district and put it in the new, uh, TIF district, uh, for housing TIF district. Again, it, it gives them a longer duration, and the rules of a housing TIF district are just a little more tailored to their needs. Uh, mu, much of this property hasn't been paying any property taxes for quite some time since the city purchased it. When, uh, when we do tax increment financing in a situation like this, the county determines what the taxes would have been, uh, had it been, had it been property that was owned by a private entity. And so the developer in this case will pay all the taxes on the property as if, uh, it had been privately owned. Uh, so they'll pay all the base taxes. So, right off the bat, city, the county, the school district will get some tax revenues that we weren't getting in the past. The new taxes that the homeowners will be paying, the seventy-two to eighty homeowners, and the apartment, um, building owners will be paying, the new taxes alone will be going, um, into this TIF district, and some of those will be going back to the re, uh, to the developer to reimburse them for costs. Some of it will be coming to the HRA, uh, to pay for HRA administrative costs, um, and some will be going to other taxing jurisdictions. The point there is that the, you know, average Richfield resident, um, their property taxes are not subsidizing this in any way. The only taxes that are subsidizing this is the development's own taxes. Uh, so I hope that answers your question.
I will, oh, this is a public hearing, so before we move to the motion. Um, this is a public hearing. Is anybody here to, um, speak on this issue? Yes. Dish, yes, if you can come up to the microphone, please, and, uh, write your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Elena Samuelson. I live at seven zero zero five Eighteenth Avenue South. My house is inside of this TIF district, and I just want to know how that will impact my taxes. I was paying attention to what you said, but I still pay property taxes, and I just want to understand how that works inside of this area.
Sure. Um, kind of the short answer is it won't affect your property taxes in any way. When you're in a TIF district, you pay the same property taxes you would be paying outside of the TIF district. The only difference is when you mail your check into the county, it's how the county allocates that money out. Um, so your taxes won't be affected. It's just where the county then sends the money. Essentially, they'll be sending some of the money back to the city of Richfield as quote-unquote "tax increment," and we will probably have a contractual obligation to give much of that to the developer, but it won't affect your taxes.
Okay, so it just means my taxes instead of paying for other Richfield improvement will be paying for the Chamberlain Development?
For this.
For this particular project.
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to comment on this issue? I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is closed.
Um, and then, do we, should we do discussion now? Mayor, um, city attorney Tejan, um, do we do two separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mr. Stark would like two separate motions, um, and I, that is just fine with me.
Yeah, that is what the HRA attorney Julie Eddington had recommended to the HRA.
Excellent. So maybe can we just have any discussion before the two separate motions are made then?
I'll add a few comments, and, uh, we heard this yesterday in the HRA, but for the benefit of, uh, the public and folks that weren't at the HRA, just want to share some of, some of my thoughts on the proposal. I mean, as, uh, Mr. Stark had said, this is more than a decade in the making, so to have a proposal like this before us is exciting to finally be taking, um, a clear step towards action, something that residents in that area have been looking for, for a long time. Uh, and there's a lot to be excited about in this proposal. I think the townhome piece of it, when you look at, um, when I door knock and talk with folks, the lack of living options like townhomes is something that comes up a lot, so this is adding a lot of value, uh, to the city. Uh, and the fact that they will be, uh, available in an affordable way for folks speaks to something that I know council member Troutman and others have talked about on the council about how making homeownership a big part of our affordable housing discussion, uh, is important, and so I think this really adds value. Um, the, we have a clear need for rental housing in Richfield, and so the fact that we're able to add, uh, market rate rental housing, uh, in this area is excellent as well. I would just add that my only hesitation is I would like to see a portion of the rental, uh, the over two hundred units be dedicated to affordable housing. The fact that it's one hundred percent market rate, I feel like we may be missing an opportunity. Um, to, there's just so few opportunities to add this amount, uh, of housing, rental housing in Richfield, and I really believe that the best way to add quality, new affordable housing is, uh, you know, as we did with Chamberlain, where we had eighty percent market rate, twenty percent affordable. Um, and I realize that there are significant challenges, uh, with this that, uh, make that more difficult, uh, but, and I don't think it should be an impedant, impediment to move forward, but I, I do, um, as we discussed at the HRA meeting, think it's something we should continue to look at. Again, just because there's so few opportunities to add this number of, uh, rental units in Richfield and where I think a lot of us believe the right way to add affordable is to do it in a mix with market rate and affordable. It's an opportunity that we should continue to explore.
I would just add to that, um, council member Howard is right. We had a, a fairly significant, uh, discussion last night about carving out and, and accepting the, the affordable townhouses in lieu of an eighty-twenty break on, on the apartments. And I think that, that's sticking with the objectives because I think we just put that into our goals as an objective. But I think that's indicative of the ability we have to, to try to balance things out and come up with the right decision, even though it may go against an, a recently imposed objective and everything, but we understand that, that, that getting the project, moving it forward, and also partnering with the developers because they're in it to, to, to support their families just like we are. So I, so the balance is something that, that I think historically has been really well, well-executed by the city council, whether it's the five people up here, the ones that preceded us, and I think it's really indicative of, of working together to get something like this done, and if there is a good side to it. We had a workshop yesterday that presented a really, really innovative idea on bringing brand-new affordable housing, not part of an eighty, eighty-twenty equation or anything else, and it created a template where we can put twenty-four affordable houses on a relatively small piece of property and with all the amenities that you would expect in a, in a market. So, that's, that's on the back, back burner right now, but it was just brought in yesterday, but the people that presented it to us were highly successful in working with the neighbors and putting a project on East Sixty-Sixth Street, so I've got every reason to believe that this is going to be the first, uh, example of a really innovative, unique way to, to build brand-new affordable housing on a small piece of property and spread it, just like everybody says. You can put it anywhere on, on maybe three lots in the city of Richfield, so you're not concentrating it, you're not putting them all in a building or in a development. We're, we're integrating the entire community with affordable market rate and all the housing that our people need. So I think, I think yesterday generated a fairly, fairly interesting debate at the same time, presented us with new opportunities moving forward, which is going to meet a lot of our goals. So, so all in all, I thought it was a great meeting yesterday, and I'm glad, or hopefully we'll get this passed here tonight.
I, I don't want to, um, just repeat everything that was said, but it is exciting that we are, we are working with developers from, you know, here in Minnesota, coming to Richfield and, and trying to find new ways and innovative ways to bring affordability. But, you know, on the east side alone, so we have the Chamberlain that really was innovative in the sense of, um, not just developing over-existing affordable housing and displacing folks, but actually incorporating that affordable housing, improving the conditions, and keeping families in their home. Um, we have this project that is bringing affordable home ownership to residents and diversifying the, the housing options, and then the project that Mayor Elliott talked about. So, it's just exciting, and I feel really fortunate that Richfield is becoming that, um, area of opportunity to, to try new things, things that are innovative, um, and are going to be more accessible and inclusive because we've got an aging community, we've got, uh, growing families, there's a lot of need for different types of housing, and, and in the project that was proposed last night, there was also, um, included three-bedroom units which, um, in the proposal, which is also really hard to find. So, it's just exciting. This is one of, of several projects where we're trying new things in Richfield, and hopefully other communities can follow, and there's more to come for our community here.
Mayor?
Oh, please.
I, two, two, two things I want to say real briefly, um, and again, not wanting to, to just, uh, say everything. I think I agree with everything that, uh, that, uh, all my colleagues on the dais have said. Um, with regards to, to affordable home ownership options, in addition to rental, I would love to see more affordable rental housing, uh, but I just, I just want to highlight how transformative it, it is when you have an opportunity to own your home. And when you're, you're renting and you're evicted, you're out in up to three weeks. When you own your home, that process can take upward to a year, and that's a year safety net that at the state level, they've, they've created that benefit. When your, your home value increases in value, all that is tax-deferred. When you pay your interest rates, all that's tax-deferred, and those are opportunities that, uh, the state and federal government have created, that we're making opportunities for folks here in Richfield to avail themselves of that, and I just think that's, that's tremendous. Um, I just want to, for the benefit of people that are, that are watching at home, a great way to say something wrong about TIF publicly is to talk about TIF publicly. But, um, but just for people, and I think you did a great job, uh, communicating, but just to, to reiterate, this is not a tax break that people are not paying taxes on these properties, correct? But the way tax, tax increment financing works is, there's an increased value that we've been, we've been waiting for a decade to see realized. Were we to choose not to do this, we could wait another decade to get a project going, and what we're doing is we're saying, we're, we're giving a developer an opportunity to leverage the value that they're bringing to our community while still paying the taxes that would be due anyways. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. They will be paying the same amount of taxes they would be paying if it were not a TIF district. It's only that a portion of their taxes that they pay will be, will come back to them, uh, as you said, to leverage funds to do the project. And this project, uh, you know, we, we make a finding that it couldn't happen except for this use of, uh, of tax increment financing.
Thank you. I'm always, I'm always hesitant with, with a TIF project, but it just, I just wanted to, to be quadrupally clear on that because it's something that can really be confusing to, to residents, so thanks for that.
Great. It looks like there's no more comments. Um, so I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution adopting a modification to the tax increment financing plan for the Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District within the Richfield redevelopment project area.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
First resolution is passed.
Excellent. And I will go ahead and make the motion as well to adopt a resolution adopting a modification to the redevelopment plan for the Richfield redevelopment project area and establishing tax increment finance district number 2018 dash one therein, and the adoption of the tax increment financing plan therefore.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both resolutions have passed. Next item on the agenda is councilman Troutman's.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the next item is a consideration of the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending section three hundred, uh, code of ordinances formally establishing a finance department and director of finance position within the city organization and amending subsection three fifteen point eleven to clarify the title of director. We just lost a bunch of our audience. I get the sense, uh, city manager, this is not the, the most riveting part of our council session. But, uh, to summarize, um, prior to nineteen seventy-nine, the finance department was independent, an independent department within the city. Uh, in late nineteen seventy-nine, uh, there was a restructuring that added a number of departments, uh, and brought them into one. To summarize, um, what we, we discussed in the last council session, uh, over time, uh, the, the structure has, has defaulted to be more like the pre-nineteen seventy-nine structure, and, uh, this, um, the returning to an independent finance director position, uh, would be comparable to, uh, to other cities, similar to Richfield, and, um, and would reflect the, the work as it's actually performed. Uh, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
It absolutely is. And the only, only other thing I would add is, um, you know, the, the, uh, position of finance director in a city is a very critical and important position. And, um, you know, we want to be competitive and make sure that we are treating our, uh, head financial, uh, person here, uh, the same way that our comparable cities do, um, because it's important that we retain the person that we have, and also, uh, in the event that person should leave at some time in the future, you want, again, to have this to be an attractive position, uh, for someone to take a look at. It's, um, it's a position that's very hard to fill in municipal government.
And we're, and we're glad for, uh, Mr. Regis who fills it for us.
We are very glad.
With, and with that in mind, um, uh, I would, um, I would move that, uh, we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending section three hundred of the code of ordinances formally establishing a finance department and director of finance position within the city organization and amending subsection three fifteen point eleven to clarify the title of director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Next item, I think council, council member Garcia can help us with in regards to, it's, it's actually a joint conference discussion in regards to city council attendance at National League of Cities summits, and having the most experience and having benefited from previously, I think council member Garcia is, is the best one to talk about it, or to get it started.
El alcalde Elliott en español. Mayor Elliott in Spanish. Um, si bueno, uh, I mean, geez, I'm starting.
Go ahead and switch.
Sorry, yeah. I, I can switch back and forth, too. Okay. Um, the National League of Cities meets, I don't know how many times a year, and it's, it's a, it's a very useful, um, time to get together and get to know what other cities are doing in, you know, it's kind of like going to class. You select what, you know, where you want to go and, and, uh, and hear a presentation and, uh, and get some questions and answers and stuff like that. It's, it's, um, very informative. It's also, uh, it's also a lot of fun because you do get to, um, you know, visit with other folks, you know, because there's different caucuses. Like, I go to the Hispanic caucus, you know, when I go. But there's also the Small Cities Caucus, the Medium Cities, you know, you name it. So, um, it's, uh, very beneficial for, um, city council members or, uh, administration to go to, to some of these, um, conferences, and, uh, they, they're, they're helpful and sometimes can bring back some salient, uh, ideas that, that'll benefit our whole population. The only problem is that, is that this one is in September, the seventh through the tenth. And election day is November, I mean, November, seventh through the tenth, and election day is, uh- is November, I mean, November, 7th through the 10th, and election day is September the 6th. So, and that's probably why a lot of people probably won't want to go, especially those two on the end. But, and I would like to go, but I'm not sure that I can make that commitment right now. Maybe by midweek, next week, I can let you know.
Okay, that'd be fine. And I know that Councilmember Troutman and I spoke this afternoon about, not this one in particular, but some upcoming and everything, so would you like to add your comments that we discussed this afternoon?
Sure. And if other colleagues have an interest in the LA conference, I would be, I would happily defer, but something I just became aware of this last week was the Hispanic elected local officials retreat in DC, which is somewhat less expensive, and I think really the topics that they'll be covering are pretty germane to our city and where we're at right now in terms of our demographic changes. So, I'd be interested in making time for that, that trip, but I would defer to my colleagues if anybody else.
I'm correct in assuming this will be in the spring?
No, this is, this is actually just in a couple of weeks. This is in September, 10th through the 12th.
Why hasn't it been published? I'm just curious, it's coming up relatively quickly.
Very quickly. I just, I got an email a week or so ago.
Are you sure of the date?
Pretty sure.
Oh, Hilo, okay, sure. Right. That's a good organization. I belong to that.
Great.
Anybody have comments or interested? It is not a great time to be heading out of town.
I may be taking a nap on November 7th.
If Calvin lets you.
That's right, so I won't be.
So, Councilmember Garcia, if you get back to us in the near future, I don't think that's going to create any problems, so should we just carry it over until we hear back from Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, will do.
So, why don't we just carry it over and then, you let City Manager know or something, we can put it back on the agenda and then we can address it at that point? Okay.
Will do.
With that being said, I don't know, do we, procedurally, do I have to just continue it to the next meeting, or just?
We can just not take any action on it.
Okay, so we won't take any action at this point in time?
Well, if Councilmember Troutman, I mean, if there's interest in authorizing that trip for September, then the council should act on that now.
So, in other words, Councilmember Troutman, are you, you're saying you want to go to that?
I would, I would be interested, but I also don't want to take an opportunity from my colleagues if there was an interest, that they had an interest in attending in November.
No, that's fine on my part.
Okay, so why don't we?
Yeah.
Is that subject to a motion, second, and vote? Okay?
Yeah.
I don't have the exact dates, but I would move that the city afford Councilmember Troutman the opportunity to attend the Hilo Leadership Committee meeting. What are the dates?
I believe it's September 10th through the 12th. The one conflict that we have is we do have a meeting with Hu Life, but I spoke with Richard this afternoon, and we'll send my comments via email and can call in.
Okay. So, I would move that we support Councilmember Troutman's attendance at that conference committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, motion is passed. Congratulations. And the report will be in triplicate?
Triplicate.
And in Spanish.
Como no.
City manager's report?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I really don't have a report this evening.
Three in a row. Two last night, one tonight. All right.
Alcalde Elliot, I will move claims and payroll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll passes, there being no further activity, this meeting is adjourned.